Have a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to you, our United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time we'll recess our regular board meeting, and we'll open a public hearing for teachers' contracts. And we'll start with the presentation by the RCTA for negotiations on the teachers' contract.
Hi, I'm Lori Shane, and I'm the chairman of the negotiating team, which basically means I just organize the meetings. I feel like I have to do it and do this. So whoever wants to take it over next year, be thinking about that. So, public hearing on collective bargaining. We're going to show you what we can bargain, what we cannot bargain, some basic finance. There's new bargaining changes for 2021, and then some regulatory restrictions. Subjects of bargaining: our salary, our wages, our fringe benefits, which include accident, sickness, health, dental, vision, life, disability, retirement benefits, and paid time off. The prohibited subjects of bargaining, I don't know if you can see her, is evaluations, hours of work, safety issues for students and staff, including COVID-related safety issues, teacher appreciation grants, class size, hiring, assignment, transfer, reduction in force, layoffs, student discipline, expulsion or supervision, and budget appropriations. And there's some more that are prohibited. The school calendar, curriculum, and curriculum materials such as textbooks and programs, teaching methods, teacher dismissal, restructuring options for failing schools, ability for a school to partner with an outside entity for dual credit, funding for remediation. And here's just some of your school funding basics. We have two funds now. The education fund is funded by state taxes. It's based on our number of students, the ADM, and that is twice a year, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Used for any instruction expenses, including teachers, principals, counselors, media, library staff, aides, paris, class supplies. May not be used for non-instructional items. And then our operations fund, which is funded by our local property taxes, and this is used for our transportation, bus replacement, capital projects, utilities, superintendent, business office, human resources, custodial maintenance, property insurance. It cannot be used for instructional items, and it cannot be used for bargaining unless a resolution is adopted by the board to transfer a specific amount for bargaining. That was hard to... yeah.
Well, so at this point, we have provided a budget to HOPE as your RCTA president, and all of our board members have the budget in front of them. Todd, I don't know if you want to kind of walk through some of the basics as to where we are on our fundances and...
Yeah, we'll...
I think you probably have that later on in the meet, like...
Yeah, this may be a good point just to put it all together.
So the presentation is in your folder, it's in your inside pocket, as the binder I gave you. The first page is just an overview. I mean, I think at this point in time, this is probably one of the last times we go through. Transition between 2018 and 2019 of the change in funds from five funds to three funds. Just kind of a reference slide. It's the calendar that we, I think we discussed at the study session two weeks ago. It's also, the calendar's also in your binder. Just general guidelines of some of the deadlines that we have to make sure we get the budget adopted by November 1st, or to gateway by November 1st. The next slide is just a history of our end-of-year balances. It's a five-year history. This slide is a background and review of our assessed valuation last five years. I would think that, from all indications, I would assume it's going to stay steady for 2022, but not a little increase from some of the guidance that the LGF has put out so far. The next slide will be rainy date fund. I know we've had discussions about some of the things that are possible thessers, so this could change, but at the moment, have kept it status quo. Of course, the revenues are, there's no revenues in there yet, so... I guess time goes on during the fall. We might, we can revisit that and have discussions about that. Next slide. Next slide is education fund projected revenues. The big one there is the basic grant. That came off of the state financial website, the DOE. Our estimated enrollment. We'll find out a little bit more on September 14th, well, after September 17th, but we'll have a little better idea where that number will be, based off of our ADM calendar. Next slide is a little bit of a breakdown of our projected budget and salaries of the different object, or program codes in the education fund. The first line is the both elementaries, middle school and high school, some of the CTE programs. So there's, that's why there's a big proportion of expenditures there. The next page is just the rest of that. And of course, the transfers are based off of what would be needed in the operations fund. So I felt like it would be a good idea to budget that the 15% are close, and then if we don't need it, obviously, we won't transfer it. Debt service fund, and this is without yet the general obligation bond. Here's the revenue, tax levels. It looks like I dropped a figure there. I'm assuming that's probably zero, or probably, yeah, I don't know. Apologize for that. I do know the final figure is correct, though, so... But that's what we're projecting for revenue next year. And our expenses will be a little bit under that, actually, so... One, the top line, that will be the last payment on that for that particular bond. That's the 2011 school construction bond, so... And then the next slide should be the operations fund, our revenues, and of course, tax levies and the transfer makes up a lot of that. Next slide, some of the expenditures in that. Nothing, nothing that's really changed over the course of last year to this year. Just increases to cover some of the costs that have gone up, trash hauling and electrical, or electricity and utilities and purchase buses, et cetera. Inflation has increased for us, so... Next slide should be the bus replacement plan. I apologize, I think that, I don't believe that I got that one. Change in the back of your binders is the correct plan. We're looking to replace a 72-passenger bus, I believe, is what came through. And we'd like to add, we'd like to purchase a, another white bus. It fills the need with extracurricular activities. We could use that, and that... So that is next. So that's, that's where we're at at the moment. So there'll be, the next steps would be the public hearing at the next board meeting. Of course, there's input between now and then. Please feel free to share that with me so we can take that into consideration and work toward that. But if anyone has any questions. Did you have any more binders? I didn't give them... Sorry, Todd. Any other questions?
Association stuff this room?
So some new bargaining related laws that came about this year. Forty thousand starting salary by 2022. This is inspired by the Teacher Compensation Commission report of a 40,000 start and a 60,000 average as a goal to be competitive with surrounding states. Forty-five percent of tuition support money for teacher salaries. This goes specifically to teacher salary and does not include benefits such as retirement, insurances, et cetera. And then the funding floor. Corporations will not decrease expenditures for teacher salaries from one year to the next as long as the state tuition support increases from year to year. Timeline for bargaining. We can do informal bargaining anytime prior to September 15. It cannot be ratified during this time, but we can discuss and start looking what each other's needs are. What we're doing tonight, having our public hearing with the association and corporation, this has to be held before we can meet privately, okay? And then we start our formal bargaining September 15 to November 15, 60 calendar days. And then hopefully, parties each reach a tentative agreement. And then the school board must conduct a public meeting regarding the contract, like a notification of the meeting, and a copy of the teacher's contract must be posted on the school's website 72 hours before the meeting. Public testimony must be allowed at the school board ratification prior to voting on the teacher contract. Other parameters. We have the IRB, Indiana Education Employment Relations Board. We've done really well with that in the past. Heidi Miller looks it over, and we pretty much have never, I think we hardly ever had anything too wrong with it there. It reviews contracts for compliances, releases a rubric to dictate the way contracts are constructed on or about August 15. New state laws, the state budget every two years in an odd year sets funding potential for each school. That's this session. State Board of Accounts. Corporations must follow state accounting requirements. And the Department of Local Government Finance controls local budget appropriations. And does the board have any thoughts, or corporation have any thoughts?
I think we've said our first...
September 1st. For our, since we've had our meeting, then September 1st for our first informal. Just kind of get everything out there and start making time to... Okay, our, the association, RCTA's priorities this year would be getting our dedicated teaching staff to their proper steps on the salary scale. We still have teachers that are multiple levels below the salary for their experience. Getting the starting salary to 40,000 and adjusting the pay scale accordingly. And unfortunately, with these times we live in, many schools are rewording the sick day section to include a description of how, they're just doing it even pandemic days. Who knows what lies down the road there, to fit into the picture. RCTA is very optimistic that you, the board, have the same goals as we do for our new contract. And can we open it?
Yes, at this time.
Yeah. Please make them short and concise, and just be about bargaining if anybody has anything that they would like to say or ask.
I'd just like to start by thanking all the teachers. This past year has been something else. I mean, what you've had to go through and deal with has been pretty tough. So we really appreciate all the work you've done. So we'll open it up to comments. We don't have any. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
At this time, we'll adjourn to public hearing. You're free to go. It's a school night, so I understand, so... But you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. So we'll resume the regular board meeting, and I'd also like to take note that Kyle Renssberger has joined us. He is on Zoom with us. I guess the board member's here, except for Tim. So we'll start with financial report. Approval claims 19570 through 19752 for a total of $1,081,304.94. Have a motion to approve? Okay, motion by Joe. Second?
Second.
Second by Casey. Air discussion? All in favor? Kyle?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed 6-0. Next item is the payrolls. And how can you look at everything overrun payrolls as well? And the motion to approve the payrolls.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Kyle?
Second.
And second by Katie. Air discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 6-0. Next, funds report.
In July, the education fund, the beginning balance was $1,018,084.17. Every receipt of $1,045,743.93. Expenses of $923,697.56. We were able to transfer $150,000 to the operations fund. Balance at the end of July in the education fund was $990,130.54. Our debt service fund, beginning balance was We had receipts of $56,802.76. Were no expenditures in July. Our ending balance at the end of July is $1,557,681.85. And in the operations fund, beginning balance in July of $1,712,513.22. We had receipts of $14,225.84 along with the transfer from the education fund of $150,000. Expenditures in July in the operations fund were $247,148. Our balance at the end of July was $1,629,591.6.
Any questions, board? The motion to approve, the funds report.
Is that moved?
Casey?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Air discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion prepared 6-0. Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Next item is the consent items. Minutes of the July 19th, 2021 regular meeting. Any additions or corrections? Minutes of the August 3rd, 2021 study session. Any additions or corrections? Minutes of the August 3rd, 2021 special board meeting. Any additions or corrections? If not, any motion to approve the consent items.
Is that moved?
Okay, motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Kyle LeBuckler. Air discussion? All in favor?
Ready?
Aye.
Okay, motion prepared 6-0. Next item, school meal pricing.
So Kathy Wilkinson has included her recommendation. This is actually driven by the Seamless Summer Option for All Students, which is allowing all of our students within the district to receive free lunches for this entire school year. Noting that increases to adult lunches has not happened since the 2018-2019 academic year, the state has recommended to us that we bump up our adult meals from $1.75 to $2.50 for breakfast, and then from lunch, $3.10 to $4.60. And again, the state is advising us, and this will help offset what we're losing in regards to the free lunches for all students within the district.
Board have any questions? They need a motion to approve the school meal pricing for the 2021-22 school year.
I'll make a mark.
Okay, motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Katie. Air discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed 6-0. The RHS handbook change.
Oscar, would you like to share your recommendation to the board in regards to your handbook change?
As taken over there at the high school, we met the leadership team and discussed the carrying of backpacks. And our freshman team of teachers had asked that we not allow those, that age of students to carry it, along with our eighth years who don't carry them. And we wavered back and forth with sophomores that they're still allowed to carry. And then the junior and senior teams of teachers had some points that they made that they would like to continue to allow the students to carry there. And our handbook had said 9 through 12 could carry it. So we changed the language to where it says, you know, 10, 11, 12 can. And then we put the size dimensions of a backpack that, I guess basically, I went on to Dick's Sporting Goods website, looked at the largest normal backpack size, and put that into the handbook, which was 28 by 14 by 13, I think. I don't remember what the last number was, but basically 28 by 14 as far as height and width. So that would be the change that we're asking you to approve tonight.
What's the reason? Why are we excluding them?
The freshman teachers, a lot, when our kids become juniors and seniors, a lot of them begin to work out in the community and have internships and those kind of things. So our class sizes are a little bit smaller. Our freshman class sizes are bigger, and when they bring in their backpacks, they seem to carry everything with them, and it becomes an inability for the teachers to be moving around the classrooms. And they just had put that request in, and so that's... I went in, I'll be honest, I mean, I went in trying to convince all not to, but working with our upper grade level teachers, they got to have their voice, and so they would like to keep them, and the freshman teachers would not like to keep them.
It just seems like a universal policy, one or, you know, one or all, but to exclude one grade is different. I hadn't heard that, because I just, I haven't, have there even freshman parents upset about it, or...
I had two parents reach out about it.
Upset, or...
I don't know if they were upset. They were asked why, and then I basically explained what I just explained to you.
So it's a safety issue part of the problem?
Well, I mean, it's hard to use the safety issue scenario since we're still allowing other students in the building to carry it. It was more the team of teachers' preferences of not having those backpacks in their classrooms with the number of kids that are in there and just their inability to kind of manage their stuff within their backpacks, so...
Now, everybody still has a locker, correct?
Yes.
And when did, you know, when I was in school, because that was a few years ago, everybody just went to your locker and got sure what you needed for the next class? That's not done anymore, I mean...
Nope. That's just a straightforward answer, I mean...
We can even know what backpacks were.
You run into a situation where a kid maybe has a class on one end of the building, and then the next period has a class on the other end of the building, and what do they get, five minutes for a passing period? Has that changed, or...
No, it's five minutes.
Do you have a situation where a kid doesn't have time to walk from his class to his locker, exchange books, and walk to the class? Does that come up?
I, to just be an open book, I can walk every hallway within that five-minute passing period.
Okay.
Like, I can walk the downstairs, go through the upstairs, get back to Pearson's room, and back to the office area before the bell rings.
Okay. Do you have a preference? Did you have, I mean, do your teachers have a preference? Did you have a preference on what was...
I went in a little more gung-ho of removing backpacks, and I listened to what the team of teachers would like to do, so...
As in, remove 9 through 12, or 8 through 12?
Yeah, I mean, I was pretty gung-ho about that until I learned what the reasoning is behind. But, I mean, Mr. Staziek had some really good valid points when we were doing our leadership team meeting of why some of those older students, with their maturity and getting them ready for the future years of their lives. So that's where we landed.
Board members, any more questions? Not, the motion to approve the RHS handbook change. I'll make a motion. Okay, motion by Joe. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Casey, second. Air discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, retired.
That means it passed the script. Or fails because of a lack of a majority.
Okay.
Can we get more discussion on this, maybe, this next study session?
You know, I guess I'm not opposed to the concept, and I'm sure the teachers, like Oscar said, I mean, there are very valid reasons. I just, I just, I have a hard time with that segregation between grades. I mean, if you have enough time to go to the classrooms, I'm not sure what, I guess I'd like to hear the reasoning why the maturity of moving on in life requires you to have a backpack. I'm not sure I understand that. I mean, I, I can understand the public safety part as far as having a smaller one, you know, it's a trip hazard, it's a fire hazard, or there's nowhere to put them, or, you know...
I would, I would think college-bound students, you know, they, when you're in college, you carry your backpack everywhere. I have the chiropractic visits to attest to that from when I was in school, but because you're not going to go back to your dorm every time between classes. But I, again, it's the segregating out one group that bothers me. It's, I would like just more information on... And I don't understand why, I mean, when did it become? And I'm, I'm, I've been out of school a long time, but when did it become the thing that we carry everything with us everywhere we go?
My kids do that. I don't know why they...
Your kids are whole, younger than my kids.
I'm just saying this is more recent. Yes, my child.
But, I mean, they have their laptops, and they all have their phones, I assume. And those things, you know, would be, I would assume they carry those in their backpacks. And, but that doesn't take a massive backpack to get that thing around.
And I can see with the laptops now, too. I mean, for, you know, that's an expensive piece of equipment that you're carrying around, you know, and you've got, I don't know, I assume textbooks and all that. You could have your hands full. You don't want the computer falling out on the ground and busting, but, you know, I'll just go back to what Oscar said. You know, he went in gung-ho removing it from top to bottom, and I'm more inclined to, you know, that way than taking out one grade or two. I assume you wanted it gone for safety, is that my understanding?
That would be the argument there, but it's hard to, for that argument, because the most recent act of... But it's hard to, for that argument because the most recent active shooter in Indiana was in Noblesville, or at least the one that comes to mind. And that kid went to his locker, got his gun, went back to the classroom and pulled the trigger. So you can debunk that argument as well if you would like to, so.
Right. Are freshmen using backpacks as we, I mean?
They're not.
Okay.
Have a.
We had about two kids who were trying to buck the system and teachers have not allowed that. And so, but we can hear what happened tonight loud and clear and we can change it as we go forward.
Oscar, isn't it, I mean, isn't it okay for teachers to say, look, we're not going to have this in my classroom? I mean, is that not?
Board sets, board sets a policy. The board sets a policy, teacher follow policy. I mean, if it wasn't in the handbook, then yes, but it is in the handbook and it's, board sets a policy.
So can we approve that it's teacher discretion?
I think it currently says that.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
No, you said one of the justifications where the freshman teachers said the class sizes are larger. And so obviously the bags create, you know, take up space and they can't move around. Have the class sizes gotten larger this year in the freshman year?
No. They were excited about the idea and the upper grade level teachers were not excited about the idea. When I took it to my leadership team. And so we had that discussion and that's where we settled on. And we viewed it, it could be a chance that we just ramp it in. You know, the current freshmen just never get to carry backpacks as they go through high school. And then by that time, we phased it out. Or maybe it ended up being a privilege for those upper grade levels. So, but we can make it work. It's not a lot more dying on, I'm just going to be honest with you.
And I can't, I'm just, I wouldn't say it's necessarily a dead issue. I just felt like we need a little more clarification on.
I think in a study session, you possibly invite that leadership team in and have a discussion and try to gather more information and understand from their point of view.
I think our next study session is a walkthrough, so you'll have access.
Till then, you can fall back on teacher discretion. Why do you feel comfortable with it?
Okay. All right. Next item, move on. Parking lot bid.
So I want to thank Mr. Heidi for being here and Terry Thornsbury for being here. So Terry, if you would please walk the board through the bid process. And then I want to thank Mr. Heidi. He's come in a couple of times to walk the parking lot with me to talk about ideas, to advise. And very much appreciate your time and through all of this.
Okay, thank you, Jen, I appreciate it. I didn't make copies, but it looks like Scott has the actual bid forms. I apologize for not making copies. I typically do and I just realized I don't have one. So we put the high school parking lot project out to bid. And we received two bids. One was from D C Construction Services out of Indianapolis and E and B paving here in Rochester. We bid it two ways. We bid it with a base bid for fall construction now of twenty twenty-one and a summer construction schedule of twenty twenty-two. We ended up getting only one bid from D C Construction. They put a no bid in for work this fall. Their base bid for summer of twenty twenty-two was one million, five hundred and five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. And then E and B had a base bid for the fall of one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. And then a summer of twenty twenty-two, a base bid of one million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. So their, their bid for summer was actually, for next summer was less expensive. And discussing it with them and also discussing it with schools and everybody else, it was going to be easier with less hassles to do it next summer rather than try to do it during the school year now. Safety is a huge issue, size of that parking lot. And we would still, we tried to figure out a way to continue to do drop off and pickup and it was going to be tricky. So definitely liked the idea of pushing it to next summer. We actually got a lower bid in that process.
I don't know if anybody has questions for Mr. Thornsbury or Mr. Heidi in regards to. My, my recommendation would be that we go with E and B paving with a summer rollout of the construction project.
Okay. Motion to go with the recommended bid, the summer budget?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Casey. Any discussion? On paper?
Right.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Terry.
Forget David.
You're welcome to stay, David, but if you have, you know, another.
It is a school night. My backpack.
Thank you. Okay, next item, agreement with N I E S T for media specialists.
Sure. So as we discussed at the study session, the state does call for us to have a licensed media specialist. Oscar, I went back to Oscar and clarified that that job was posted for a period of time. Reflecting back and talking with the state, only two licensed specialists came out of the state of Indiana this past year with this licensure. Working with N I E S C and meeting the lady who is interested in tackling this for a couple of the smaller districts who are not able to fill this position. She gave her qualifications or her, what she intends to do with the job description, and I've included that. It was really enlightening to have that conversation. Her goal, and she's a huge advocate for media specialists. And I think as Katie pointed out at our study session, those things that we don't want to lose with a media specialist. And so she is advocating for two things. One, to make sure that she trains and supports the instructional assistance in that position to the best of her ability. And then that you can see that there's a conversation around the education, being able to build a rapport with teachers and understand their needs and what they're learning. But she's also advocating at the state level that this be changed so that you have certification rather than licensure. And this is, these are some of the items that she's proposing. And her hope and desire is that she either inspires somebody to go into the profession or that she can start a certification course in which they're able to tackle a lot of these components that have been outlined. My proposal would be, because we need one and obviously haven't been able to locate one, to at least approve this for this year, evaluate the program as we continue to post the position and see if we can get somebody licensed. If not, making sure that we continue to evaluate, have those conversations and, and roll this out so that the school is in compliance with what the state's requiring.
I was grateful to get that.
Yeah, it was great to sit down. I was able to spend about forty minutes with her and it was very enlightening. A lot more comfort going into that.
I agree.
Any other questions? Not a need motion to approve the agreement with N I E S C for media specialists. Sound left. Okay, motion by Katie.
I'll second.
Second by Kyle McLaughlin. Any discussion? On paper?
Right.
Okay, motion carries six zero. Thank you. Next item, we went through a lot of policies and I'll list them for you. This will be the second reading of policies, fifty-eight, ninety-five, twelve, twenty, thirty-one, twenty, forty-one, twenty, twenty-two, forty, twenty-two, sixty-six, forty-four, twenty-five, forty-four, thirty, fifty-one, eleven, fifty-four, ten, sixty-two, fifty, seventy-four, forty, point oh one, seventy-four, fifty, seventy-four, fifty-five, seventy-five, thirty, point zero two, eighty-five, hundred, eighty-five, ten, eighty-six, oh six, forty-one, sixty-two, zero, A, fifty-one, eleven, point oh one, fourteen, twenty-two, thirty-one, twenty-two, forty-one, twenty-two, fourteen, twenty-two, point oh two, thirty-one, twenty-two, point oh two, forty-one, twenty-two, point oh two, sixteen, sixty-two, thirty-one, sixty-two, forty-one, sixty-two, fifty-five, seventy-one, twenty-two, sixty, twenty-two, sixty, point oh one, A, twenty-two, sixty, point oh one, B, fifty-five, seventeen, point oh one, bylaw one, sixty-four, point four, bylaw one, sixty-four, point six, bylaw one, sixty-seven, point one, sixteen, twenty-three, thirty-one, twenty-three, forty-one, twenty-three, sixteen, sixty-two, thirty-three, sixty-two, forty-three, sixty-two, fifty-five, seventeen, twenty-two, sixty, and twenty-two, sixty, uh, point zero. So I didn't hear any bingos, so.
I was just trying to pull my lottery numbers out.
There'd be some lucky ones in there.
Well, for those of you in the audience and even on Zoom, the majority of these policy updates had to do with Indiana residency. So they were policy updates for requirements, adding requirements to make sure that Indiana residency was a requirement, proof of Indiana residency, because there were some issues. And then there were some Title IX already. They changed some policies and replaced some, some of the Title IX language, which again is, is all federal and state. I mean, the majority of these were more of a, this is changed and you need to adopt them. I do have a brief description if anybody is interested in going through them. I'd be happy to share my notes. There were some replacements, there were some deletions as far as the replacements of the Title Nines. They deleted the other ones. And then I don't remember, do we have to approve, there were a couple of these that the board had to make the decision on. Are we going to do, yeah, are we going to do the third reading and the vote at the next board meeting? So did you want to discuss those tonight again?
Well, I thought we, didn't we agree that we were going to take the recommendations from Dr. Snotty?
Well, and that's what, the one we had, I think so. And I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting too, like, the next meeting and being like, oh wait, we need to make a decision on this.
We can look at those specifically at the next study session. They're loaded, the majority of them are loaded on the website. There are a couple that, Mula has transitioned from a paper format to an online. And so there are a couple I am still working with them to, to locate within their files. And so my hope is to have that rectified by the end of this week and then they will all be up on the website. And then I would propose that at the next study session, you would be able to pull them up specifically off the website. See what, what the recommendations were to be checked, make sure that there aren't any questions, those types of things specifically.
I think at the study session, what we had talked about were the ADM counts for the virtual students. We needed your three recommendations and admins, three recommendations as far as what we needed to put in that policy as far as what we're going to require for proof.
Right, so I talked to Melissa Layman because she has the majority of the students with the enrollment and the follow-through. And so she gave me those recommendations and those have been marked in on the website.
And then the other one I have in my notes is the wellness committee.
Yes, so working.
Or the drinking water?
Yep. Kathy Wilkinson.
I think that was. I think that was it as far as the decisions we had to make.
Thanks, Casey. Any other questions? Not a need motion to approve the second reading of the policies as presented.
Sound left.
Okay, motion by Casey.
Second.
Second by Katie. Any discussion? On paper?
Right.
Okay, motion carries six zero. Okay, next item. We have the adopted preliminary bond resolution. There's a couple of items related to the bond. Rochester Community School Corporation is seeking to sell for improvements. Ice Miller has been consulted as bond council. It's a procedure that needs to be followed in order to incur this bond. And the preliminary bond resolution review, which explains and asks the board to find, one, that the present facilities of the school corporation are not adequate to provide the proper educational environment for students. Two, that there are not sufficient funds available or provided in existing tax levies to pay for the cost of needed renovations and improvements, including the purchase of equipment, buses and technology. Three, that the school corporation should issue bonds in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. Four, that the bond will bear interest at a rate, a rate not exceeding five percent, which interest will be paid on January fifteenth and July fifteenth and each year beginning July fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. Five, that prior, that prior to the sale of bond, public notices will be published in the Rochester Sentinel and the Indianapolis Business Journal. And six, that the board will discuss how the bond proceeds will be appropriated at a meeting after the notice of the hearing on appropriations is posted. So do I have a motion to adopt the preliminary bond resolution?
And if anybody, I don't mean to interrupt, but if anybody has specific questions, Brock Browder is here from Ice Miller. Baker Tilly, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. So he's here if we have any specific questions or any advice that you might be seeking from them.
You should go ahead and get your motion in a second before you go into the discussion of that. Okay, and I could read the preliminary bond resolution if needed? Won't you have a motion? Did you get your motion?
Sound left. Second.
Okay, motion by Casey, second by Katie. Any discussion? On paper?
Right.
Okay, motion carries six zero. And so the bond reads, preliminary bond resolution, whereas Rochester School, Community School Corporation is a school corporation organized and existing under provisions of Indiana Code twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Board of School Trustees finds that the present facilities of school corporation are not adequate to provide the proper educational environment to the students now attending or who will attend its schools. And whereas the board finds that there are not sufficient funds available to provide for an existing law tax levies in which to pay for the cost of the renovation and the improvements to the school facilities, including the purchase of equipment, buses, technology, and that the school corporation should issue bonds in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the purpose of providing funds to be applied on the project. That the bonds in such maximum amount should now be authorized now therefore be resolved by the board of the issuer that for the purpose of obtaining funds to be applied on the cost of the project, there shall be issued and sold the bonds of the school corporation to be designated as general obligation bonds of twenty twenty-one. The bonds shall be in a principal amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, bearing an interest rate or rates not exceeding five percent per annum. And the exact rate or rates to be determined by bidding, which interest shall be payable on January fifteenth and July fifteenth and each year beginning July fifteen, twenty twenty-two. The bonds shall be fully registered in the denomination of five thousand dollars or integral multiples thereof and shall mature serially or be subject to mandatory redemption on January fifteenth, July fifteen, beginning no earlier than July fifteen, twenty twenty-two, through no later than January fifteenth of twenty twenty-six. The bonds shall be redeemable in the dates and in amounts determined by the issuer. Be further resolved that prior to the sale of bonds, a public sale notice of such sale will be published in the Rochester Sentinel and in Indiana Business Journal prior to the date fixed for the sale of said bonds. At the time fixed for the opening of bids, the board or its designated committee shall meet. All benches shall be open in the presence of the board or such committee. And the award shall be made by the board or such committee. Be further resolved by the board of the issuer that the matter of appropriating the proceeds of the bonds authorized at this meeting be taken up for consideration as soon as notice of the hearing on the appropriation can be given as provided by law. And that the Secretary of the Board is directed to give notice of the public hearings to be held prior to the final action on such appropriation, which notice shall be published in the Rochester Sentinel at least ten days prior to the date set for such meeting. Be further resolved that the Secretary of the Board be and hereby is directed to give notice of determination to issue the bonds, which notice shall be published twice, one week apart in the Rochester Sentinel. Also, that notice of determination shall be posted in three public places in school corporation. in three public places in the school corporation and is passed and adopted the sixteenth day of August. Okay, any questions? Now we have the Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures Resolution. Okay, this will be a, the motion to approve this. And I'll read it after it's passed, if it is passed. So a need of motion to approve Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures Resolution?
Someone.
Okay, motion by Kyle McLaughlin.
Second.
Second by Casey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, most carries six zero. Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures. Whereas Rochester Community School Corporation intends to finance the renovation and of and improvements to the school facilities, including the purchase of equipment, buses and technology. Whereas the school corporation reasonably expects to reimburse certain costs of the project for proceeds of obligations to be incurred by on behalf of the school corporation in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. And whereas the school corporation expects to issue obligations for the project and to use a proceeds to reimburse or pay for the cost of the project. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school corporation declares its official intent to fund the project with proceeds of obligations incurred by the school corporation in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that the school corporation reasonably expects to reimburse itself from proceeds of obligations issued by the school corporation for the cost of the project paid prior to the issuance of the bonds and is passed and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-one. Okay, any questions? Okay. Next item, donations.
Did anybody have any questions, Brock?
Just maybe one comment if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
That for those of you who have refinanced, purchased new homes, it's a really good time to be issuing bonds. So it's a really nice time to consider bonds like this at a low cost to taxpayers. And probably the most important part of this project, I believe Todd may have distributed some materials, but the most important part of this project is no impact to taxpayers above what they're currently paying in the twenty twenty-one tax season. So that was a main point that this board has already heard and gave us direction on as we work through administration team. So two key points, low interest rates, no increase to taxpayers. So with your decisions tonight, I want to team up with your team and get these bonds sold.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, donations. Hope County Solid Waste District, five hundred dollars for RMS recycling. Treasures for the Heart Ministries, one thousand dollars for backpack food pantry. Kroger, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents for the Rochester Community School Corporation general donations. Kim Burton, Teacher Supplies to Columbia. Were there any additional?
Not coming up.
Okay, a motion to approve the donations as presented?
Someone.
Okay, motion by Casey.
One second.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion? All in favor? Dial? Okay, most carries five zero.
We think you can.
Come on. There you are.
He's still on.
He's still muted. Okay. Moving on here. Personnel report. Okay, recommendations. Mary Ann Miller, special, Riddle Special Needs Instructional Assistant, hourly rate of ten dollars and one cent. Andy Gearhart, Riddle Special Needs Instructional Assistant, a rate of eleven dollars and fifty-two cents. Jennifer Helder, Middle School Service Assistant, ten dollars. Kimberly Scholl, Part-Time Interpreter for Columbia Sign Language, hourly rate of eighteen dollars. Reassignment. Kristy Bearling, from RMS Instructional Assistant to RHS Instructional Assistant, hourly rate is the same as before. We have CIA Coach Nikki Overmeyer from Middle School, a stipend of two thousand two hundred and fifty. We have the resignation of Brittany Piercy, RHS Drama Director. And our ACA recommendations are Jamie Kirkwood, RHS Student Council, at a stipend of four hundred and eighty-three dollars. Michelle Gibson, RHS Half a Key Club, stipend of one eighty-two fifty. And Catherine Lucker is half a key club for one hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. And we have an additional, Brittany Scaly, be hired as a part-time English-language learner teacher for the twenty twenty-one year. She will work fifteen hours a week. And her pay will be twenty-five dollars per hour.
Cassie, did you send that?
I did, it was late today.
Here we go. I can pull it up. Okay. We have recommend, adjust the salary of Chad Pyle for his Special Education Teaching Position at the middle school. Mr. Pyle has fifteen years of experience and is currently only being compensated for fourteen years as it was documented in his application. The paperwork received from his previous employment verified he has fifteen years. So his previous salary is fifty thousand seven hundred and the recommended for fifteen-year experience is fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty. Thank you, Cassie. Okay, any other questions, comments? And need a motion to approve the personnel report?
Someone.
Okay, motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Casey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, most carries six zero. Thank you. Well, down to personnel or superintendent.
So I want to share that Jason, at Jason's Building at Columbia, we have had to close two classrooms. One is the developmentally delayed preschool classroom and the second being a kindergarten classroom. When we were able to meet as an administrative team this afternoon, we had nearly one hundred students out at Columbia. That's right, at thirty-five, or thirty, I'm sorry, thirty percent. Twenty-one percent of those students are out due to some level of COVID. Either they tested positive or waiting on their test results or they are home because they have been, they're isolated due to contact tracing. I did not have a chance to talk with Luke. I know he was called out of the meeting as his nurse and his staff needed help with contact tracing. But prior to his leaving, we had fifteen COVID-related concerns at Riddle with three teachers out. Middle, we had seven with three pending results. And at the high school, there were thirty-one students out ill and we were trying to track down exactly what that meant for the high school. It's, it is becoming one more difficult. And as an administrative team, we talked this afternoon that last year, when we had these kinds of outbreaks and closures, we could track them specifically to something outside of the district. What we are seeing now is definitively being tracked within classrooms. And so we are taking the initial steps to do more deep cleaning, asking teachers to separate their rooms as best they can. But I would respectfully ask that I have the opportunity to work with the team some more this week and send out a doodle to work with the board to schedule a meeting. We may need to make potential changes to our reopening document based on the data and information that we're collecting here. My fear is that should we not do something, we are going to be closing entire buildings and it's going to happen sooner rather than later. I know it becomes very political, I know it becomes very emotional. I also know that the public does not want us to close buildings. But we need to do something because what we're currently doing is not working. So no changes at this time. We're deep cleaning classrooms, we're doing those things. But definitively, what we're doing is not working. Brock was just in here and shared that Avon Schools just went to mask mandates, those types of things. But we need to do a little bit more deep dive as an administrative team and then bring to you our suggestions to make sure that we can continue as best we can to keep this district up and flowing. I know it's not necessarily what the community is doing, but I would respectfully argue that what we do, how we have to function, the classrooms that we're in, we need to do something differently. What we are doing is not working. So I'll work more with the team. They had cheered some of their concerns. I want them to talk to teachers. I know we have our CTA discussions coming up this week. And then I'd like to send out a doodle for us to schedule the possibility of changes to the reopening document as well forward.
So we have some tough decisions going forward here.
We do, and we're collecting that data for everybody to look at.
Decisions we'd like to make but are necessary. Do we know, as soon as that our contract had become illegal, are they worse than last year's? I mean, is it affecting kids? Is it harder on them or how bad is it?
I know that at Jason's Building, they're running very high fevers. Is that correct?
Sure.
Other buildings, I, just high fevers? Are you seeing anything else, just chest colds?
Seeing at Riddle that they're actually symptomatic. It's a lot, it's different than it was last year.
Yeah, it's different. I don't know, I think we've had as many or more positive cases this year in our building than we had all of last year. As far as.
Still.
A lot of our close, or a lot of our quarantining and stuff that took place last year was taking place because of family members and things like that. It wasn't because kids were in the building and sick. That's not the same this year. We have kids in the building that are sick and kids that are in close contact with a sick child and that wipes people out pretty quick. We're just concerned for the safety.
And the data shows that those close contacts are also becoming now.
Correct. It's being transmitted. And this variant's more contagious, I guess, too, is probably part of the problem.
In, in cases such as, as the flu in years past, was there not some kind of a guideline as far as what percentage of students? I, I.
So I mean, this is viral such, and so is the flu. We know COVID is a different virus. But I, I would like to have something to, to look at as a reference. So in the past, the standard has been at twenty percent of anyone building or twenty percent of your district population, then you would close down. Work with the, right now, Dr. Rayburn has lifted those because of the nature of COVID and contact tracing and how that impacts. But in Jason's Building alone, we're at thirty percent.
All right, not the best news to hand on.
No, and I appreciate the team, I appreciate the teachers. I know that they are already, last year, we were having those meetings at seven fifteen in the morning. We were having to shuffle personnel, do those types of things. And we're finding at this point, we're already short-staffed. It's been very difficult to shuffle those personnel. And then when you have specific outbreaks within classrooms and you are exceeding, typically, they were saying two per classroom. Jason is exceeding that in his classrooms. Then we have to shut those down in its entirety. And my fear is, should we not do something different? This is going to perpetuate. And again, the data, we want to collect meaningful data. We want to bring that to you. The differentials we're seeing this year is last year. It seemed to happen outside, we can track it, we can trace it. This year definitively, they are transmitting within classrooms.
Okay, board members, any other comments? I'd like to thank everybody for coming and you'll join the meeting. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to.